Good evening, everyone, and thank you for tuning into the 2022 Hamilton County School Board debates. My name is Carrie Randolph and I'm the Executive Director of Chattanooga 2.0. To begin, I would like to draw your attention to the closed captioning feature on your video player, which will turn on subtitles should you need or prefer them. In 2015, Chattanooga 2.0 started as a movement to transform education and workforce development outcomes from birth to career. We have since grown to a community-wide network of organizations collaborating across sectors, working to ensure that children and youth in Hamilton County have access to quality education and career opportunities to help them realize their full potential. I'd like to thank our partners, the Chattanooga Times Free Press and Local 3 News for co-hosting these critically important debates alongside us. I'd also like to thank our District 11 candidates Jill Black and Steve McKinney for participating in this important conversation this evening and for their interest in serving on behalf of students, families, and teachers on the Hamilton County School Board. The Republican candidate in this district, Virginia Ann Manson, who was originally scheduled to join the debate, had a personal conflict and was unable to accommodate the additional dates offered, so she will not be joining us. All three candidates for District 11, however, answered some candidate profile questions and an educational equity questionnaire ahead of tonight's debate. If you'd like to read their full responses, visit chatt2.org/vote. Chattanooga 2.0 was born out of a recognition that strong educational outcomes, birth through career, are essential to our community's economic growth and progress and require community-wide commitment and action. We believe that strong leadership at all levels of the educational system is necessary to our success as a community, and we recognize just how important these races are during today's challenging times and into the future. Thank you again for joining us. Thank you, candidates, for your willingness to serve our community in such a vital way. And without any further ado, it is my pleasure to introduce David Carroll of Local 3 News and Allison Shirk of the Chattanooga Times Free Press, who will be moderating this evening's debate. David and Allison?
Thank you very much, Carrie, and want to thank both of you candidates for being here this evening. Alice and I will go over the rules of the debate for you and for those watching this evening. Both candidates will leave their cameras and microphones on at all times during the debate. Each candidate will be given two minutes to make an opening statement. Allison and I will then alternate asking a total of eight questions, and there could be more depending on our time limitations this evening. Two of the questions will be presented by stakeholders who live in this district. At the end, each candidate will pose a question of their choosing to their opponent. Each candidate will be given one minute to respond to each question and an additional 30-second rebuttal if we feel that is appropriate to do so. And when your time is up, you will hear a rather loud sound, something of a train whistle, so be listening for that. Time begins when you begin speaking, and once time has expired at the end of an answer, the moderator can choose to allow a candidate to complete a sentence, but the candidate should not start a new thought. Allison?
Thank you, David. Each candidate will be given two minutes to make a closing statement. Moderators may ask candidates to clarify a statement or explain an acronym when needed. Candidates may not use the internet, cellphone, or any other outside assistance to answer questions during the debate. And the goal of the debate tonight is to introduce the candidates of District 8 and their platforms. There is no winner or loser tonight. Candidates will conduct themselves in a respectful manner and not use derogatory language, and we will start with opening statements in alphabetical order and then alternate who answers first. And as a reminder to our beauty audience, if you are just now joining, the Republican candidate in District 11, Virginia Ann Manson, who was originally scheduled to join this debate, had a personal conflict and was unable to accommodate the additional date given, so she will not be joining us. Shortly before the debate tonight, she sent a statement to Chattanooga 2.0 Times Free Press and Local 3 News that I will now read. And this is from her campaign. First, I would like to thank the Times Free Press, Local 3 News, and Chattanooga 2.0 for hosting this important community forum. And most of all, thank you to all who have joined tonight. It is with deep sadness I will not be able to be with you this evening. A leader in our community has recently lost a family member, and it is imperative to be with the family during this time. Though it was attempted to find a new date to move this important event to allow my attendance, it was ultimately decided by those who planned the forum to continue as scheduled. Our campaign appreciates those who made the effort, who made the effort to find a new date. If you at home have not been able to attend one of the other four debates put on by this community, or I have not knocked on the door at your home, feel free to contact my campaign with any questions you may have. To all my supporters, thank you. Our schools are the most important asset in our community. It is incumbent upon us to make sure today our next generation is educated to lead tomorrow. Thank you. All right, candidates, do you have any questions on the debate rules before we get started? All right, I will take that as a no. Jill Black, you are up first. You have two minutes to make your opening statement.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much to Chattanooga 2.0 Times Free Press and Local 3 for allowing us to come together tonight to discuss important issues that face our community in regards to our local schools. I'm Jill Black. I am running to be the first representative for the brand-new District 11 on the Hamilton County Board of Education. I am a wife, the mom of two great kiddos who attend Hamilton County Public Schools, and I've been a social worker in the community for the last 17 years. Seventeen years ago, I chose Chattanooga as my home and moved to this community to take a job with Stand for Children. I was organizing parents to support candidates who would invest in public education at the local level. And the job didn't last long, but it got me here to Chattanooga. I met my husband. We started a family. I worked at the Department of Neighborhood Services and Community Development at the City of Chattanooga. I taught foster parent classes to teach parents how to parent children who have been through trauma in the foster parent system. And for the last 10 years, I have been working in the community as a Medicaid social worker, working with the elderly and permanently disabled under the Choices Program as a care coordinator. I've been in the homes of many communities that now lie in the new District 11, helping the elderly and families navigate that system and any illnesses that they have. I took a step away from work last summer and to help my family with some medical issues, and ultimately started to wonder how I could serve my community well and use my time. I watched them draw District 11, and having been someone who works so closely in the community, who understood the needs and the diverse district that is now District 11, I wanted to step up and serve my community by running for school board.
All right, thank you very much, Jill. And Steve McKinney, you now have two minutes to make your opening statement.
Thank you. I do appreciate the opportunity to come before the public. Any opportunity that I have to be able to to spread how I stand on things and just my philosophy on education is important to me, and I do appreciate your involvement. I was a school teacher. I taught in Murfreesboro. I taught high school, taught ninth grade. Moved to Chattanooga to be closer to the grandkids, decided that I would fill the role of a substitute teacher because it was very obvious that that role was one that needed to be filled. So being a classroom teacher, I wanted to be involved, and so I started going into the classrooms. And I've been in the classrooms with your students. I've walked the halls. I've seen and heard their daily challenges. I've seen things that work, and I've I've seen things that divided. I've observed some barriers to learning. I served as a licensed teacher for 244 days in 36 different Hamilton County schools. I believe in a focus on the foundations. I believe in reading, in science, technology, engineering, and math. I also believe not all students are geared toward college, and therefore, there's a program that's already in place in our county schools that's called Future Ready, and I believe in that. I'm strong on education. I'm strong on family, and I'm a neighbor. I live in St. Elmo on the avenue of where I will be here as of next month for three years. So I'm a St. Elmo person. I believe I can make a difference. And my name is Steve McKinney, running for District 11 as an independent, not as a Republican, not as a Democrat. I feel like at 66 years old, as a man of faith, as a teacher, as a parent, as a grandparent, I didn't need a party influencing me one way or the other. So I do, again, appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight. Thank you.
And thank you both for that opening statement. Our first question comes from Nina Brock, who lives in District 11. And Jill, you'll go first when I ask this question. Mrs. Brock wants to know, how do you view decisions about school curriculum, choice of teaching, and reading materials in classrooms and libraries, and other matters regarding student instruction, being the purview of parents as opposed to teachers, librarians, and other academic personnel? Jill?
Well, certainly, we as parents and caregivers for our students have a responsibility to monitor the media and books that our children choose to read. Our curriculum is set at the state level. There's a committee at the state level in Nashville who chooses the curriculum that is appropriate, and then each school system from the approved curriculums chooses what they are going to teach. So those processes are already set. However, when it comes to Hamilton County schools, we have 45,000 students in our school system. They come from hugely diverse backgrounds, cultures, religions, and family structures. We are not always going to agree on what is appropriate or should be taught. So it all comes down to the fact that I trust teachers, librarians, and literacy experts to be the professionals that they are.
Jill, thank you very much. Steve McKinney, your answer to that question?
The state, yes, does dictate the curriculum for the teachers to follow. I think that parents need to have some level of involvement, but not in deciding what the curriculum might be. I think that there's a partnership that needs to be in place between the parents and the teachers, but I'm all in favor, as a teacher, of let the teachers teach.
All right, thank you both. Allison?
Thank you. Steve, this next question is going to go to you first and comes to us live from Joni Somparrak. Joni, thank you for being here, and thank you for being willing to ask your question live. You can go ahead and ask it.
Okay, thanks. I'm a resident of District 11. I'm also a college professor, and so what I wonder is, what do you believe is the purpose of public education? Is it to prepare students for the workforce, or is it to help students learn to be critical thinkers?
That's a good question. I think critical thinkers, I want the students to be able to love to learn, and I think critical thinking will help open up that pathway for that. Some, I think, will be headed college-bound and some for Future Ready-type jobs, but I think it's a big deal for them to develop the love of learning, and I think the public school system can certainly do that.
All right, thank you, Steve. Jill?
Thank you for your question, Joni. Hopefully, we don't have to choose. Our students need to be critical thinkers, and those skills are skills that they can use throughout their life, no matter what they choose to do, whether they choose to pursue a college path or a trade. Critical thinking skills does prepare us for the workforce. We use all kinds of skills, emotional skills, and the knowledge that we learn through the basic curriculum that we're taught through education every day in the workforce. So no matter what we choose to do, public education is to prepare us for our lives, no matter which path we choose to take.
All right. Are you two ready for a hot potato now? Let's find out. The subject of Future Ready Institutes was brought up a little earlier. That has become a growing trend in our school system. But there's also been talk about establishing a vocational school downtown. As a school board member, how would you prioritize this idea over the facilities needs of existing schools? And, you know, we could talk all day about Clifton Hills, CSAS, Normal Park, and several others that are in disrepair. There's, I'm told, $895 million in deferred maintenance on these existing schools. So let's put you both to work on prioritizing this talk of a new technical school downtown with the deferred maintenance at our existing schools. And Jill, you go first on this one.
Okay. So we do have a long list of facilities' needs that are already in existence. This particular conversation, for me, has to shift in light of the recent gun violence that our communities continue to be vulnerable to. Any of our existing schools that are using portable buildings for their staff and students and have part of their school community outside of a secured school building, you don't have a safe and secure campus when it comes to the risk of gun violence if part of your students and staff are outside of a secured school building in portables. For our existing schools, for me, that is the most equitable way across the county to prioritize the schools that need renovation and construction needs because we must secure our campuses. I do support establishing a separate self-sustaining fund for facilities' needs, and new and old.
Okay, and to make sure I interpret you correctly, you would prioritize the needs of the existing schools over a new downtown technical school at this time?
At this time, I feel like safety is the most important thing.
Okay. Steve McKinney, your turn.
Well, that is a great question, and I think that the the schools the schools definitely need some attention for the facility's safety and just bringing the schools up to a level where they can be safer, but also a little bit more current, has got to be a priority for me. I think that the the Future Ready, as I mentioned earlier, is real important, but I think that the general population has got to be addressed first in terms of infrastructure and that of the safety.
So to be clear, both of you, as I take it, would prioritize the needs of existing schools over a new downtown technical school at this time?
That's me, yes.
All right, so I don't think there's any reason for any rebuttal there. Let's move on to our next question, which is on the topic of student mental health, and it comes from Sydney Crownover, a student in District 11.
Okay, and I will say she's a little soft-spoken, so you might want to turn your volume up just a little bit. Also, repeat the question if you need me to.
My name is Sydney Crownover. I'm a senior at Lookout Valley Middle High School, and this is my question for you. In school, we have people teaching us how to stay physically healthy, but we don't have anyone teaching us how to stay mentally healthy. Most schools only have one to two counselors, and these counselors have other responsibilities like schedules and standardized testing that they have to do. Because of this, most of them don't have time to be able to help all the students in their school building. So my question is, what will you do to be able to help students in our school system improve their mental health?
Did everybody get that? All right, Steve, you'll go first.
I think that having good mental health in the schools is a very positive step that has to be in place. The young lady that spoke was a great student. I've been a part of her experience at Lookout Valley on multiplications, and she's very right about what she brought out. I think that it is important that we do have attention on the mental health, and more social workers, I think, would be a help in the school setting. I just think that a school that has strong mental health is a better school than one that doesn't.
And Jill Black?
This is an especially important topic considering what we've gone through in the last two years. Our students, I think sometimes we lose focus. At the administrative level, we look at test scores and achievements and numbers on a spreadsheet, and sometimes we forget that these are little people, and our students have lived through the uncertainty of the last two years right along with us. They've experienced all the same fears and anxieties and instability. We absolutely need to invest more in our support staff that can help our students who are struggling with the effects of the last two years and things that were existing before. Mental health needs, emotional needs, and any other things that students might be struggling with. Counselors and interventionists who can come around and support those students who are struggling and also relieve some of the pressure on the classroom teacher is the best investment that we can make.
All right, thank you both. Allison?
Okay. Our fifth question of the night is on the topic of school safety and bullying. Many in our community would argue that K-12 schools should serve as a safe space for students, but we received many community questions on the topics of school safety and bullying. The question to you is, given current events, what do you think the greatest threat to students is within this school building? And what would you have the school board do about it? Jill, the question goes to you first.
I've been on a lot of doorsteps all across the district that I'm running for in District 11, and in every single community, almost every single day that I go out and knock on doors, we talk about bullying. This is a huge concern among caregivers of students all across Hamilton County. And safety must be imperative. It must be our top priority when children are in our school buildings. Ensuring the safety has to be top priority. But the things that we can do, I support a solutions-based discipline policy that helps children address the root of the problem. Because when you have a bullying situation, you have a child that's being bullied, but you also have something going on with that bully. We need to hire more support staff, like social workers and interventionists. All behavior is communication, and we have to figure out what those bullies are trying to communicate to us, the need that is not being met for them. And it also offers us an opportunity to partner with community organizations that offer mentoring programs that can really come around and support students who need it.
All right, I hear the bell. Steve, you have one minute.
Will you repeat the question?
Yes, I can repeat the question. All right. Let me find my spot. Many in our community would argue that K-12 schools should serve as a safe space for students, but we received many community questions on the topics of school safety and bullying, and you two have both mentioned it so far in this debate. The question to you is, given current events, what do you think the greatest threat to students is within this school building? And what would you have the school board do about it? You have one minute.
Safety, again, is paramount in this situation. I think that we have got to change the way that things are going to the degree where we form a committee, and the committee would be comprised of teachers and of parents to try to get to the bottom of what are some ways that we can resolve. We can't solve everything. We certainly can begin to address the bullying because it undermines the safety for students in school.
All right. I don't believe there's any rebuttal there. We'll move on. All right, this was a little complicated. That's a great question. Tennessee's new school funding formula, TISA, TESA, will infuse a one-time $250 million investment in education spending statewide starting this fall. After that, $750 million in recurring funds will be dispersed in the next two fiscal years. It's a lot of money. Hamilton County is expected to receive $397 million in fiscal year 2024, $47 million more than the system will receive this academic year. Now, TESA is a funding formula, but it's not a spending formula. So that brings us to this question. It will be up to the school board, of which you may be a member in the future, to determine how these funds are allocated to the 75 or so schools within our district. So if you're on the school board, Steve and Jill, will you advise the funds be equitably allocated to schools in your district and across the entire county? Equitably allocated. If so, how would you do it? If not, why not? Steve, how are you going to spend that money?
Well, I think, let me talk about educational equity. It should be the ultimate goal of all of our stakeholders, and I feel like that we've got to develop an environment where they can grow and thrive, and it's going to take input from several sources. I don't pretend to have all the answers, but I do pretend to know that there are people in a group that we can find those answers. There are issues that we need to face today, and there's going to be features that we need to face in the future. But you can only spend a dollar once, so I think it's critical that when we start to see planning in place for this TESA money, that we do have a good plan in place.
Jill Black, your turn.
Through some discussions, I came across an idea that seems to make a lot of sense to me as far as how we come about our budget. You know, certain things are just set, like how many classroom teachers based on the students that are there. A lot of things are set in place based on the students in a certain school building. But I like the idea of a bottom-up budget and involving the leaders of our different school communities, our principals and administrators, in helping us build a budget that works for their specific school community because they understand their students and the needs of their school community the most. One school might need more ELL interventionists. Another school might want to make their music teacher full-time. Another school might decide that they want to hire an extra school counselor. And building our budget from the bottom up would provide more equity as far as giving each student and each school community what they need to be successful, and it also might be a more efficient way to build our budget.
Steve, any rebuttal on that?
No.
All right, let's move on.
Great. Public education is not possible without public school teachers, and we know a great, supportive teacher in every classroom is critical to a student's success. As a school board member, what tactics would you use to support to retain or recruit teachers? Jill?
Teachers are very hard of public education, but they also never ask to be put in the middle of a culture war that has gone on over the last year or so. Teachers leave this field at a staggering rate in the first five years of their career, and now we're seeing teachers retire at an alarming rate as well. For me, I believe that we have created an unsustainable work environment for our educators, and in order to retain the talented educators we have, we have to address their work environment to be more supportive. The best investment that we can make is in people capital and hiring more adults to be in the building to help classroom teachers and educators address the needs of students. More counselors, more interventionists, more aides to come around and help the students who are struggling and relieve the pressure on the classroom teacher. We also need to address their pay and pay them equitably and competitively when in comparison to even other professions in order to retain them.
Okay, thank you, Jill. I'm sorry I cut you off there. Steve, you have one minute to answer.
Teachers are the lifeblood of the school, and one of the principal parts of what makes a school work is the principal itself. And the principal, every time, and being in as many schools as I have, as many days I've had, I've had a lot of opportunities to talk to principals. They always want to support the teachers. They always say they want teacher support. And I agree with Jill, the environment in which our teachers are placed is very difficult, and we've got to find a way to sustain them as teachers and give them the confidence and the support because what they're dealing with has never been dealt with before. It's been unprecedented. But teachers transferring or teachers quitting, everybody loses. And there's too many classrooms in which I've substituted where the teacher is now gone, and that's not good for Hamilton County schools.
All right, Jill, did you have any rebuttal to that? Are you okay with that?
Actually, yeah, no, the other the other thing is supporting new teachers with mentoring programs is something that can really help us retain our teachers. I think a lot of teachers come out of college and have to learn classroom management and a lot of those skills on the fly, and having mentoring programs with more experienced teachers to help give more support to those new teachers is another strategy that can work.
All right, thank you both. This next question really relates to why you're both here. District 11, newly created. Redistricting has created two new districts, one of which is yours, and this is a very economically diverse district that you will be representing if you are elected. It includes some of the most affluent city blocks, some of the most impoverished city blocks. It includes some of the most affluent city blocks, some of the most impoverished city blocks, neighborhoods that are quite well-to-do, others that are not, schools that are very well furnished and highly rated, others that are not so much. If elected, how will you advocate for and balance the representation of such a diverse group of constituents? Steve, you go first.
Keep our feet on the ground. I think that we've got to stay in touch with the schools. We need to have relationships with the principals so they can talk to us. I think that we've got to be trusted, but we also have got to listen to what they have to say and share that among those that are stakeholders. Because we have lots of people with investments in schools, and I think if we bring all together, then we all win.
All right, Jill?
The diversity of this community is exactly why I decided to run for school boards. I watched them draw Districts 11 during the county commission meetings. And knowing that my background in social work, being someone who's worked in the community so closely with families of all different types, with all different struggles, knowing the neighborhoods that go from Germantown Road all the way to Racoon Mountain, having that professional experience and perspective, as well as being someone who is parenting children who are in the public schools, those two perspectives gives me the skill that I need to represent such a diverse district. But we do have to stay in relationship. It's about living in community with one another, and we need to do a better job about that, engaging stakeholders and community members who are invested in seeing our public schools succeed.
All right, Allison and I have been communicating online here, and we are realizing we're a little bit ahead of schedule. Each of us have an extra question or two. We'd like to get in before we give you two the opportunity to ask a question to each other. Let me start with this one. There have been some national and local concerns about school board member conduct. And there's been some of this in Tennessee as well. There have been accusations of racist statements sometimes made during school board meetings, inappropriate behavior outside school board meetings. You know, being a school board member carries a lot of responsibility. It's a very lofty position in our community. So let me get you each to talk about your commitment to appropriate behavior if elected to the school board. How big a priority is that for you? And Jill Black, you go first on this one, please.
Absolutely. When we step into the public arena and offer ourselves as public servants, that's exactly what we are. But we also become examples in the community. We become, especially being in the schools and developing those relationships with the students in our district, we become role models, and that's something that I take very seriously, for sure. Yes, I think we are called to a higher standard. I always will prioritize good governance, acting in good faith, and living well in community with one another. That's what reflects my values as a person, as a person of faith. I will do my best and always try to treat people with respect and acting in good faith as a servant of the community.
Thank you, Jill. Steve, same question for you. What sort of school board member will you be as a human being, as a person?
I will be the best, kind of like in scouts, you promise to be the best that you can be. And that would be my promise because I would be a role model. I would be one that would have a responsibility for a higher level of accountability. So whatever decisions I make, whatever I do is going to be under scrutiny, and I accept that responsibility. It's a privilege, but it's also something that I take very seriously, and I would do all the things that I would have anticipated any role model of mine to have done, and that is to do their very best.
So you each pledge not to embarrass your district?
The best of my abilities.
Yes.
Allison?
All right, so my next question, it comes in light of the overturning of Roe v. Wade. In Hamilton County, there are dozens of teenage parents. In light of recent, in the light of the recent overturning of Roe v. Wade, would you support increased sex education for children intended to aid in the prevention of teenage pregnancies? Steve, I believe you are first.
I would pause on that because I really don't know what we're teaching now, and I don't think that it would be appropriate for me to comment on it because I don't know enough. I'm not sure that Roe v. Wade, what effect it even should have on school.
Jill?
I believe that is one of the decisions that Nashville has decided to make for our community. I believe that they set that curriculum and the rules around that curriculum at the state level. So I'm not sure that there's much that we can do on the school board.
Good point.
All right, let me ask each this one. This is another one of those breaking news questions we kind of pop in because some information came out today that a little bit frightening. Our countywide COVID numbers are up. Some employers are once again mandating masks. We had hoped those days were behind us. They may not be. Would you support a return to teacher-student masking like we did before if Hamilton County COVID numbers return to the previous levels? Steve McKinney, you go first.
As far as mask mandates, no, I think that the parents need to make that decision.
So under those circumstances, would you recommend Dr. Justin Robertson or any school board vote mandate that we return to masking? That's, you're saying that's a parent decision?
I'd say it's a parent's decision. If it becomes such a level that it is epidemic, then yes, I would go with whatever the decision of Dr. Robertson and his staff was. But initially, I would say no.
All right, Jill?
Again, that's another decision that Nashville has decided to make for us. They've passed legislation saying that local districts can't mandate masks. And as long as that is in place, they are the superseding rule.
Do you have any personal opinion on that?
My family and I personally listened to the health experts and followed the advice of our local health department.
All right. Any rebuttal, Steve? You okay with that?
Sure.
All right, Allison?
Okay. We have reached the part of our debate where you each get to ask your own questions to each other. So now each of the candidates will pose a question to their opponent, and we will have a one minute to respond. Jill, please pose your question to Steve.
Steve, describe the exact moment you decided to run for school board.
The exact moment I decided to run for school board? It was January of this year, and I had attended some school board meetings, and I didn't feel like that the parents had a lot of say in what the school board was deciding. And at that point, I thought if I want to have any impact whatsoever, then the way to do that would be by being on the school board. That's as close to a moment as I can remember.
All right, and Steve, you get to pose a question to Jill Black.
Sure, the question is, for me fundamentally, my perception of being on the school board is through the lens of a teacher. Having taught ninth grade, having been involved as a sub, having a current license to teach, I see things in the school system through the lens of a teacher. And you don't. So the question I would ask is, what is your response to that? Because yours is not through the lens of a teacher. Yours is through maybe multiple lenses, but it's not that of a teacher.
You're right. I have not spent time in the classroom as a teacher. In graduate school, I did pursue certification as a school social worker. When I was pursuing my master's in social work, I took the school social work class. I did an entire school year of internship in the schools. But my passion for systematic change around equity in public education ultimately pulled me to advocate for that equity outside the system because I felt like I would be frustrated as a school social worker working in the system that existed. And that's how I got to taking the job with Stand for Children, trying to affect change from the outside by organizing parents to affect elections in that way. But my perspective as a licensed social worker and someone who was trained to be a school social worker professionally gives me the perspective of the whole child. I truly do believe in the whole child approach to education and finding that balance between the curriculum, things that we have to teach, and the life skills that we ought to be teaching that help children manage themselves in a classroom, stay engaged, and continue on their learning journey. Finding that balance and educating the whole child is a passion of mine that comes from my professional perspective and then my perspective as a parent. So you're right, I do view all of these things through multiple lenses. But I also believe that my perspective is valuable and needed.
All right, thank you both. Allison?
Thank you, candidates. That brings an end to our questions for tonight's debate. Now we will conclude with closing statements from each candidate. Jill Black, please give us your closing statement. You have two minutes.
Thank you so much to Chattanooga 2.0, The Times Free Press, and Local 3 for hosting this really important discussion for around our public schools. These issues affect our community that we all live in. And District 11 has an important decision to make. Early voting starts tomorrow and goes through July 30th. Election Day is August 4th. I hope that I have earned your vote tonight. Vote for Jill Black on August 4th.
Right, and Steve, you have two minutes.
I'm a parent first. The reason I came to Chattanooga was because of that role as a parent and a grandparent. And my grandkids are all in public schools. So I'm also the teacher we talked about, perhaps ad nauseam, but I think that's significant, the teacher part. But I'm also a neighbor, live in St. Elmo. This is home. And anything that I do, it will be impacted in my community because this is where I live. So my closing statement is, I hope if it's in the will of the people that they'll elect me, vote stevede11.com, that I can represent you. I am high on priorities, and I don't, again, need to have a party tell me which way to lean at 66 and as a man of faith and one that has taught and is a parent and is a neighbor. I don't need a party telling me how to lean one way or the other. So I ask for your vote. It's vote stevede11.com. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here on this live feed, and you guys have been awesome, put it together. I know you've run through some gymnastics, it seems like, to schedule this. And I certainly appreciate all that you've done because I don't think anybody outside of the group of us recognizes how much effort you've put in to make this happen. And I want to thank you.
We appreciate that, and I can tell you from someone who's sort of involved in putting this together that there are some great folks at Chattanooga 2.0, one of whom you're about to hear from, and some others behind the scenes who have indeed engaged in some gymnastics to make it happen. And I'm very, very impressed by that. And as I've said every evening as we conclude the debates, I'm very grateful and thankful that you and all the candidates have put yourselves out there in the public eye and on the campaign trail to take on a job that cannot be described as rewarding and glamorous. It's something that people aren't exactly lined up to run for, and that's a little bit sad. But I'm glad that you folks are putting yourselves out there and wish you both the best in supporting schools, whether you're on the school board or from outside. It's good to know that your heart's in the right place. And I'm going to turn it over now to Carrie Randolph, the executive director of Chattanooga 2.0, to close it out for us. Carrie?
Thanks so much, David. And thank you, candidates, both for participating and again for your interest, as David said so eloquently, in serving in this vital leadership role. Thank you to our moderators, Allison and David, and to our co-hosts at Local 3 News and Chattanooga Times Free Press. And to your point, Steve, everybody who's worked hard to put this together. Thank you to Sydney, the student from Lookout Valley Middle High, and the many community members who submitted excellent questions. And Tony for being here tonight to ask her question. And last but not least, thank you to our viewers. As I stated in the beginning, Miss Virginia Ann Manson could not be here with us tonight due to a personal conflict, but you can read all three candidate profiles and their responses to our equity questionnaire on our website. If you missed the first part of tonight's debate for District 11, the video recording will be available later this evening on Local 3 News YouTube channel and timesfreepress.com. Next Tuesday, July 19th, we'll be right back here at 7:00 PM for the District 3 School Board Debate between Jen Parath and Joe Smith. Don't forget the early voting, as Jill mentioned, starts tomorrow, Friday, July 15th, and ends July 30th. The deadline to request an absentee ballot is July 28th. I encourage you to head over to chat2, that's C-H-A-T-T, the number 2.org/vote, where you will find more information about the candidates, the upcoming election on August 4th, and how to request your absentee ballot. In closing, 2022 has been another trying year for our community. Strong leadership on the Hamilton County School Board is needed now more than ever as we continue to make Hamilton County Schools the best school district in the state of Tennessee for our kids. And so I thank you for your engagement on this critical topic. Have a good evening and stay safe out there.